I ask the police department to give the pledge of allegiance. And we'll take the care of it instead of you both. We can apologize. Is that everyone?
Go into the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the reason why we have a seal of blue tonight is because we want to recognize President Ryan O'Neal, Assistant Lieutenant, Rescue Driver, who was involved in a car accident on January 31st, 2025. And I believe Chief Chambers has been able to give us a story here.
If I may, so I've been a member of the police department here in Westford for 25 years. And I've been a member of the administration with Chief McInnes here as well since 2013. And I don't remember us really recognizing anybody for civilian service. So that's how out of the ordinary this is. And the actions that Mr. O'Neal participated in that night were just kind of beyond our wildest dreams. He really helped. So summary of the incident, as you said, Scott, on the night of Friday, January 31st, 2025, at approximately 6:51 PM, Westford Police and Fire were dispatched to the area of 29 Williams Ave for a report of a vehicle had slid off the roadway, rolled onto its roof, and the operator was still stuck inside. Upon arrival of the police and fire units, the operator had already been safely removed from the overturned car by the original caller, Mr. Ryan O'Neal. Coming up, sure. You can see who you are. Mr. O'Neal explained to the officers that responded and firefighters that responded that he saw the crash occur, saw the vehicle roll onto its roof, and it rolled into a depression off the side of Williams Ave. He stopped his car, and when he rushed over to check on the operator, he saw that there was water rushing into the passenger compartment of the car. He said he was able to locate a log that was next to the crash site and attempted to break a window to try and get the operator out. And when that didn't work, he realized he had his son's baseball bat in his car. Ran back to his car, got the baseball bat, went back over to the overturned vehicle, was able to smash out the passenger side window and assist the operator from the vehicle. Fire personnel that arrived on scene also stated that O'Neal's swift actions likely prevented a significant medical event. And although we don't always encourage civilians and bystanders to intervene and put themselves into jeopardy or harm's way, because oftentimes that results in us having additional victims, in this case, Mr. O'Neal was able to assess the scene for danger and act decisively to prevent the possible tragedy. So with that in mind, the members of the Westford Public Safety Team would like to thank Mr. O'Neal for his selfless actions that night and present to you the civilian service certificate. Say that fast three times. Civilian service certificate and a Westford Police Department challenge. Thank you for your brave actions. Thank you. As you can tell, Mr. O'Neal is very well known, both within the police community and within the community. He's been a wrestling coach in Westford for a long time. And as you can see, I think he's very well thought of by the turnout and this recognition tonight. So thank you again.
Well, I ran back to my car. I was like, hey, I'm looking for something to break in. Jordan's like, my baseball bat my son got. He was with me too.
You're free to say what you feel like.
On the off chance you're just here for that, we can take a minute if you want.
If you allow me, I just need to take a couple of minutes. Thank you. 10 years ago, my wife and I chose to live in Westford because of, you know, excellent education, wonderful neighborhoods, and kind people. Tonight, we learned that Westford is not a place for kind people, but also people, exceptional people, that they have integrity, courage, and the willingness to do the right things, even though when it is taking risks. Mr. O'Neal, what you did the other night, rescuing my son from terrifying situation, is something that we will never forget. Thank you is not enough to express our gratitude. Mr. O'Neal, we know people like you exist in this world, but having you and your son in our town is a blessing. You are not more than, you are not neighbors anymore for us. You are a family now, and my family, me, will be forever grateful for what you did. And I'd like to take a moment to thank Westford Police Department, especially Officer Mariano, who is not here tonight, who was there before we even arrived alongside with the fire department, making sure my son's safe and receiving the care that he needed at that time. Their dedication and response, quick response, gave us reassurance in a moment of fear and uncertainty, to be honest. And a special thank you to Captain Abrielt for taking this, making this recognition. And he's not only did that, but also reached out to me personally. They offered the accident check on price and suggested to do this thing to honor Mr. O'Neal and his son for their incredible act. It's because of leaders like you, our town remains strong, united, and full of compassion. And lastly, I want to thank God for keeping my son safe. His protection was over him, and I believe God works through people like Mr. O'Neal and his son, who like were there at just the right moment to help. Tonight, we are reminded that Westford is more than a town. It's a family, and my family and I, we are beyond grateful to be part of it. Thank you so much.
So, why? Anybody else? So, thank you very much. There was.
Thank you for your words.
At least we can.
Thank you, sir.
And with that, I would like to also recognize the local department. So, you've been here for the past week or two, realize the incessant snow and ice, particularly the ice and that. So, I want to thank them for their work, especially February 15th, for saving the storm. Snow, rain, ice, and a lot of work, a lot of hours, a lot of salt. So, the fact that you may recall, I've been trying to salt shed, basically. I think there's a report time, I know something about that. Next time, department, local department, while they're working storm. So, anything else?
I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago. I just want to mention again that on Friday. Oh, sorry. Wendy. Okay, sure. Okay, thank you. Wendy Glode, 16 Pleasant Street. I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago at select board meeting. Just wanted to reiterate that on Friday evenings from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, Westford LGBTQ is hosting support groups. The First Parish Church has been very helpful in allowing us the space. And it's been very, we've had well-intended support group sessions. And we're able to help folks cope, especially the transgender, non-binary, or gender expansive individuals in the community who are having issues with passports, driver's license, other documentation that are in relation to the executive orders by the incoming administration. So, just want to reiterate that we will be there on Friday nights as long as we need to, to help support the community.
I just have one thing. Just many of you will notice that we have a new setup. A new A vehicle has been installed. Just wanted to remind members of the public who are in the room. This is the microphone here that is catching everything. We can hear whispering and talking when Nick is recording for WCAT. So, we just request that if you do have a private conversation, if you could just take it outside, or it will be broadcast for everybody to listen to on Westford CAT. So, just wanted to make that clarification for people before we moved on to the next item.
Thanks. And with that, the select board actually has a statement. I'm not completely going to discuss the specifics. But Andrew kindly volunteered to write this, so I'm gonna.
With some help. With some help. So, I think as we mentioned two weeks ago, that the select board was working on a statement. And tonight, we'd like to make this statement and deliver it to our residents in our community. Over the last weeks, the select board has heard concerns from our residents in light of recent executive orders and actions taken by the federal government targeting the immigrant and LBGQTIA community. We recognize that for certain sectors of our community, our fellow neighbors and friends, this is a scary, uncertain, and stressful time. In the strategic plan recently approved by the select board, Westford describes its vision as being a welcoming and inclusive community, one that is caring and engaged. In realizing this vision, the select board and town officials reaffirm our commitment to creating and supporting an inclusive, diverse, caring, and accepting community. The board wants to reassure our residents that we remain committed to ensuring that your civil rights and protections and freedoms, as guaranteed by the United States Constitution, the nation's laws, and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts shall be protected. And we are committed to fostering a safe environment for all our residents.
Thanks. And so tomorrow, please, to be posted, and to be posted to the website.
It'll likely be tomorrow, yes. Yes, they're on board to do that already.
Hope you see that again and again, hopefully next Tuesday. But thank you, Andrew, for putting it together. Next up is a consent agenda, request for the following. Road race, Westford Academy road race applicant is Mark Kader, made fourth at 9:30 at Westford Academy in the surrounding roads. And that is actually surprisingly it for our. Some public safety comments. All in favor? Next is a request to update the cemetery regulations.
Lisa will be here in person. I'm gonna promote Kyle.
So, thank you. So, in 2024, town meeting authorized the select board to approve the Westford Cemetery regulations adopted by the Cemetery Commission. So, thank you for taking that on. And we're here tonight to request your approval of proposed revisions drafted collaboratively by the Cemetery Commission and Cemetery Division and adopted by the Commission on February 13th. So, following is a summary of the revision highlights and why we felt the need to make them. And I, and you all had a chance to look those over. So, highlights. So, the current version was approved by special town meeting in 2019, so five years ago. And then the previous version was approved by the Cemetery Commission in 1997, so 22 years ago. So, many of the changes that we now propose clarify the regulations and improve organizational flow of the document. So, it basically makes it easier to read and understand. And the cemetery staff, Heather and Connor sitting back there. If you haven't had a chance to meet Connor, he's our cemetery supervisor. And Heather, Connor, he's our administrative assistant, and they are rock stars. And so they had a lot of input because, of course, they're working with the public all the time and around these regulations. And we feel that these changes will help their work, in addition to helping the public understand the regulations better. So, just a few significant events since 2019 necessitating the updates. So, of course, we became a division of the new DPW, so there were language changes around that. In 2020, town council had recommended the addition of two important clauses. This particular incident arose and it just necessitated these additions. I don't think I need to go into the detail, but that was important to make those changes. And then also, the 2019 version included new rules for green burial. And after creating the new green burial section at Pine Grove Cemetery in 2022, and gaining more experience with this way of burying, which was new for us at the time, we just wanted to make some minor tweaks of those regulations once we got more experience with it. And then probably the most significant change is the restriction of lot sales to Westford residents, or former residents who lived in Westford for at least 10 years. So, Kyle actually is going to say a little bit more about that through why we feel the need to restrict it to former residents of 10 years.
Thank you, Lisa. Can everybody hear me? Good evening, select board. As Lisa mentioned, probably the most significant change in the updated regs is the requirement for purchasing burial spaces. We didn't come to that decision lightly, but it was based on need, some statistics we've gathered. We started two years ago doing a lot inventory projection at the end of each. Notably, the green burial section is our most critical type of site. And at the end of 2023, we had estimated, based on five-year sale, a little under seven years of lot sales remaining for the green burial section. When we redid that this year, at the end of 2024, we're down to about five and a half years. And that's largely due to the popularity of green burials, but also the scarcity of it in other communities. So, to protect Westford's investment, the commissioners felt it was prudent to add this restriction into the regulations.
Okay, makes sense.
So, that's all that I have to present at this point. Kyle, did you have anything more to add?
Yeah, the only other thing I would add for the select board's consideration. We did have town council review the regulations following initial reviews from the commissioners, and then the commissioners reviewed again after. One point of discrepancy that came out was in paragraph four, section one, in the new regs. And the language is actually the same as the previous versions. And it basically allows the commission to adopt and amend fee schedules. And Attorney Corbald thought that that may be something that the select board would want to retain the control over. The commissioners felt fairly strongly that that should be a point that continued to be with the cemetery commissioners. So, that's how we wrote it in the regulations. But in an effort to be transparent, we wanted to bring it up to the select board as a concern.
Appreciate transparency. Any questions, comments from the board? Not appearing, is there a motion?
I'll move to adopt.
Oh, second.
All in favor? The question on fees, Kyle, so.
Thank you for all your hard work. You're welcome. Thank you so much.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
Next, a request to consider waiving building permit, inspection fees for JV Fletcher Library, building projects. If you've got Ellen.
I think we also have Buffy Dirks from the Board of Library Trustees and Jennifer from our OPM.
Hi, good evening. So, thank you so much. This request is from the Permanent Town Building Committee and the Board of Library Trustees, who are working together on the library building project. And this is a request basically to waive the town charging itself for both the building permit fees and the inspection fees that would otherwise be part of this building project.
So, I'll say something from one pocket to the other.
Right, and we traditionally and historically have always done it. So, I move to approve the waiver.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Thank you, Ellen.
Scott, so just point of precedence for me, and I think that Andy already answered it, but for the fire station, for instance, for something that's a municipal resource, like the library or the fire station, we've traditionally waived.
Correct.
Yes.
Thanks.
Because it's an internal transfer across departments. And all it does is impact a budget of the building. From the town standpoint, it's revenue.
Yeah, makes perfect sense. I was just thinking of a case where there's something that's a benefit to the town, but not a town-owned property. There are times we've not done that. So, I'm just, the distinction in my mind is it's basically a municipal building.
It's a municipal building, correct.
Okay, just wanted to understand that distinction.
Yeah. Might have done it for one or two, to one nonprofit or something, but it's very rare. It's usually, it's just for municipal buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Second, I think we might have done it for hogs in the woods, something for the former housing. We may have done it, if I can.
Yeah.
But we did for cottages.
We did do it for cottages, yeah.
Right here is where something.
All that history.
So, after the ultimate visit, a request from the TAC committee of a second high school student seat for one-year term expired June 30th, 2026. It's discussed, so we can also approve it, but if you have the, I can't imagine any objections.
Any comment from the liaison?
Except that we'd asked that you approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor? Next, we have a request from the Rest, Equity, and Inclusion Committee for the Select Board to, Westford as a co-sponsor, the town of Acton, for the pride festivals to take place on, traditionally, first week of the Fair Park. And to all the town of Westford seals, we use our outreach material for, which we did just last year. If you recall, the funding is raised through private divisions. It's not done with town funds. So, all we're doing is allowing them to use town seal on a event sponsored by our county.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Second.
The debate, all in favor? Where to put updates?
That is yours.
That's okay.
Where to put updates? Okay, so 10 minutes report.
Yes, so there's many things on this, and you'll just note that we took the town annual town meeting out of order because the Community Preservation Commission is meeting at this point in time. We're waiting for a recommendation from them to come in. So, the first matter on the town manager's report is to sign a letter of support for the 35 Town Farm Road residences. As you may recall, this property is currently owned by the town of Westford, 35 Town Farm Road. And Choice, it has the agreement, it has all the permits in place to build senior housing there with the food pantry. They're entering their next phase in applications to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, and they have requested a letter of support from the select board for that submitted.
Full disclosure, Dave asked me for a letter. It's chair, I said I want to take it to the board because, A, it's our decision as a board. Secondly, I think it carries more weight, so if there is a.
I'll move that we send a letter of support for 35 Farm Town Road.
Second, all in favor? It's a farm town.
Did I say town farm? Was it farm town?
I think it's a farm town.
It's my dyslexia that's kicking in, okay? No, no, you probably heard correctly.
Great. Ellen Rainville may still be on the line for this, but we're requesting that the board sign a license agreement between the select board and the JV Library Board of Trustees for drainage infrastructure in the rear of the library property. If you reviewed the site plan associated with this request, the town of Westford Board of Selectmen controls that property. There's a design at this point in time for drainage structures to be located on that property. And we felt that it'd be prudent to have this license agreement in place between the Board of Library Trustees and the select board. This license agreement has been drafted by town council and reviewed fully by town council.
So, Ellen, anything you want to add before I give it to John?
No, it's just that very seldom will water flow across the border, but this is the legal mechanism to be sure that the infrastructure can cross our rear north line.
John? I have a question about the characterization of the library as the owner of JV Fletcher Library. I think the town owns that. They have care and custody. I think that's a mischaracterization. I'm surprised the town council approved that.
I believe that the deed has the library as care and custody, but we can.
Care and custody is one thing. I think ownership is different.
Well, it's owned by the town of Westford.
Yes.
Care and custody is JV Fletcher Library Board of Trustees.
They were the owner. And I just think in a legal document like that, that's questionable.
Well, they're the owner or they're the project owner.
No, it says, where is the library as the owner of the JV Fletcher Library?
We had that issue when we got, signed the contract with the state. And they were talking about the applicant, which was initially the library. And then they said, no, it's the town owns the library. If they were incorporated, then that would be different. They're not incorporated, and the library was given to the town. So, I just think it's, we're signing a legal document here, and I think it's between two town properties instead of. It's a technicality, but it's still a legal document.
We can make a set of breaks.
Yes, we can. We can double check with council and then make the appropriate.
Under care and custody of the library trustees.
Sure.
Of the library itself.
That makes sense.
Is there a motion to approve the agreement as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. John, you need to have an LLD next to that behind you.
That's right. Battlefield Commission, Ms. Lawrie.
The next one is, Mike, do you want to explain this one, the Good Energy?
Yes, so we had an original professional services agreement with Good Energy, who was our consultant at the Westford Thought Program, or CDA, Community Electricity Foundation. The agreement was signed in 2015 originally, and basically re-upped every time we had a conflict. Since 2015, they have not had any change in the fee structure. They're proposing the fee structure change. They've proposed in 24 municipalities, they're all participating in CDA. We see no reason to want that to board, especially discussing. The other thing that did come up when we viewed the agreement was that our attorney has described as simply a script from zero, they reversed their language. So, we were operating under the intent they were operating. Since 2015, the language showed that it expired 2020, so we're fixing that. Actually, they have them put in two extra pieces in there for protection. That and have the new fee.
Yes, to the board? I think Ryan's. All right, ready for, okay. Is there a motion to authorize the agreement?
So moved.
Second. I'll take it.
Okay, the next is to accept the grant and authorize a town manager to execute a related grant agreement for the. for the MBTA Catalyst Fund Award. As you may recall, we asked the board to support an application to the state for MBTA catalyst funding associated with a transportation and pedestrian bicycle accommodation plan for our MBTA zoning district that has been approved by the state and for $300,000, so we'd like the authorization to move forward with that. And I'd just like to send my appreciation to the Land Use Department, the Planning Board, and others who were involved in making that happen as well. It was quite a quick turnaround, and they had a wonderful application and were proud to be receiving the award.
To authorize.
With our thanks.
With our, James, thanks.
All in favor? Are we just Chris? Sorry, I mean, that's what's too fast for me.
The next is a group of purchase orders. First one for Microsoft Government Cloud for IT Services, the amount of $53,065 as requested by the Technology Department. This is a grant-funded expenditure to continue our migration to the cloud with Microsoft 365. The next is Dennis K. Burke for gas and diesel fuel, and the amount of $100,000 as requested by the Public Works Department. And the final is for Eastern Salt Company, Inc., for the purchase of Road Salt, and the amount of $475,000 as requested by the Public Works Department.
To approve.
Second.
All in favor?
And the next round is for contracts. The first is for a contract with the Northern Millsex Council of Governments for the following projects under the District Local Technical Assistance Program as requested by the Land Use Department. The first is for the Westford Open Space and Recreation Plan, 2025 to 2031. The total DLTA funding is $30,000. The town match is $15,000. You have in your packet a confirmation that the Conservation Commission will be funding that $15,000 for a project total of $45,000. The next is for tiered site plan review through the Planning Board. The DLTA total is $5,000. The town match is $5,000 with a project total of $10,000. The third is at-home and greater Lowell Regional Housing Strategy in the amount of $8,000. The next is the compliant zoning for protected uses for accessory dwelling units in the amount of $10,000. The next is for Regional Housing Services Office Pilot Support in the amount of $20,000. And the final is for Northern Millsex CEO, so town managers, town administrators, group support in the amount of $7,000. Happy to take any questions on that or go through all of the contracts.
So far, it took a while.
The next is a contract for Mayflower Evaluation LTD, excuse me, LTD for fiscal year 2026, Department of Revenue Certification Work in the amount of $18,000 as requested by the Assessors Department. Allstate Birm Company for snow removal services for 2024, 2025, winter, snow, and ice season as requested by the Public Works Department. Arbor Works LLC for tree removal and maintenance-related services for $35,000 as requested by the Public Works Department. And the final is a reconsideration of the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Massachusetts Stop-Loss Coverage from March 1st, 2025 through February 28th, 2026, as requested by the Health Insurance Trust. And that information just came in your packet today. John and I attended the Health Insurance Trust meeting yesterday in which our rates had dropped because we had a positive change in one of our claimants, changing their care from a hospital setting to an at-home setting, which significantly dropped our stop-loss coverage for the next year.
Great. I'll move to approve.
Second. Second, all in favor? Yeah, we held the annual town meeting articles until last, because we're hoping to hear from the.
Which we have.
We have?
Yes.
Okay, so. Do you want to show the town or show the.
I will, I'll say it when we get there to Article 8, but it's favorable.
So. Sorry, 20 minutes in advance, right?
Yeah.
I'm wondering, yeah, I mean, I'm wondering if there are people like this who, he here, make comment, and we're 20 minutes ahead of time. There's nothing left.
We could do correspondence. Some of them are.
Yeah, some of these I think are.
Some of these are, we can do, I mean, like the town reports and, you know.
Maybe judgment of the chair.
I think we could say Article 1, Article 2, 3, 4, something stuck right through this picture. It's going to be some.
Sure.
We've actually reviewed these already, past meetings and set the order, so I think A is kind of behind us. It'd be is the, especially as code, that is one where I think we may want to wait till we get more people here because of the discretion. So. We want to set the order.
We set the order.
Well, can you do the vote recommendations? All we can do is recommendations. Article 1, acceptance of reports.
Motion to recommend.
All in favor?
Second.
Second.
Article 2, approved of fiscal year 25 budget appropriations transfers. Kevin?
Yes, we do. So I'm showing the motions on the screen. We have three, one for snow and ice, one for veteran service expenses, and one for risk management. The risk management is for our Medicaid. We had quite a substantial increase in that that Dan O'Donnell explained to the Finance Committee last week. And then we have a transfer for the recreation enterprise expense. We're actually running better than we expected for that, so we need to make that transfer, which will be coming in as revenue on the other side. And then those are the supplemental appropriations, and then we have the transfers from library personnel to library expenses for $37,000, debt service for town capital project fund of $100,000, and debt service for school capital projects of $285,000. We had explained in our budget presentation back in December that we are going to be more creative with funding those capital budget expenditures in fiscal '25 to free up budget for fiscal '26.
Income's already approved this at the last meeting, so we can, in our position, please. We'd like to.
So I'll move to recommend.
Second.
All in favor? And our good friend, proclorate expenses.
Back again.
Yep, so this is a continuation of our program to monitor and hopefully close out the site related to proclorate. This cash amount of $110,000 is the same as it was last year. I have confirmed with our consultant that they expect to expend about the same amounts as they did last year as well. We are getting closer to closeout, but we're not there at this point.
I've been hearing that we've been getting closer to closeout for five years.
Takes a long time.
I'll move to recommend.
Your second, second. All in favor? I think we discussed energy efficiency projects in the past, so I think that. Mike discussed it in the past, and if you don't.
I can just very briefly give an update, and if anybody has any specific questions, Mike is the best one to answer that. So throughout the work that we've done over the past two years or so, we've seen that we're missing out on some energy efficiency if we don't have the money upfront to fund that, because there are a lot of rebates on the backend if a project is completed and has been showing progress over a point in time. So our staff has worked to ask town meeting to appropriate funds into an account that would be used to perpetuate energy efficiency projects over a period of time. And the first year, we're asking for the sum of $200,000 to do that.
About $200,000, 177, actually. I need to be spending on. Can we recommend?
I'll move to recommend.
I got it. Favor?
So capital appropriations, this is highlighted as we have some weight-breaking information. The majority of this information you have seen before. The Capital Planning Committee has reviewed and recommended these items for the capital plan. You'll note that under the schools, $350,000 was incorporated into the capital plan for the Westford Academy Field Lighting Improvement Project. Originally, this was requested for community preservation funds. The Community Preservation Committee did not take any action at an earlier meeting. They just met this evening, and they did vote to fund it through the capital, excuse me, through the community preservation accounts. So we would be looking to take out $350,000 from the capital appropriations and move that into the Community Preservation Fund.
Wait a minute, wait, I'm confused.
Sure.
So you're going to take the $350,000 that was appropriated through capital, and now you're going to put it into?
Yep, so the original plan was that the lighting would be coming out of the Community Preservation Account. Community Preservation did not vote in favor of that originally. So we, Dan and I, worked together to fund it out of the capital plan. This evening, we found out that the Community Preservation.
I get all that. It was your last sentence I didn't understand. Okay? The $350,000 that you were going to fund in the capital plan?
Yes.
Okay. That, you said that that money's going back into CPC?
No, 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 I apologize if I was confusing you. So that money will no longer be coming out of free cash. It will be coming out of the CPC account.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
Just get a opinion from council that said that that was legal.
Yes, and the CPC reviewed that this evening.
No, I know all that. I was just confused by Kristen's last sentence. I know all the other stuff, okay?
So I'll make a motion to recommend as amended with the $350,000 coming out of this request and the total being reduced by $350,000.
So that's just one part of Article 8. I know, it's a really long article. The other, so there's multi-parts. Mike and I have granola bars in our drawers if you like something.
I'm gonna make it.
Yes. So $818,968 from the Water Enterprise account. $1.6 million from Stormrider Enterprise for the construction of the Reed Brook and Acton Road culverts. And $170,757 for three cardiac monitors from the Ambulance Enterprise. And then there's a second and a third motion, so I'll hold there to see if you want to vote on the first motion.
Those are the two thirds.
Sure.
Is there a motion to approve that first segment that Kristen's enumerated? Can I recommend it?
I'll move to recommend.
Your second. All in favor? And the two thirds.
Okay, so the two thirds. The first is for $1.35 million for the purchase and equipment of a new rescue pumper truck from the Fire Department. I'll just go through all the two thirds ones. The next is $800,000 for the engineering design and construction of pedestrian safety improvements at West Street and North Main Street. The fourth motion is for $2 million to purchase and install new turf at the Nutting Road Community Fields. And that concludes Article 8. Excuse me, Article 5.
And just the reason they're two thirds is that these will be.
Borrowing.
Is there a motion to recommend?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
It was just before we moved, just as a matter of information, there was a really interesting article last week about fire trucks and how expensive they're becoming and how there's a shortage. So doing this now to get in the queue is really important because there's like a three- to four-year wait at this point, so.
Chief shared that article with me as well.
Oh, did he? Okay.
The proper money that was put into the economy here was to buy fire trucks and ambulances, and regulations that put all the small guys out of business, so now you've got a handful of factories trying to make demand for it.
Right.
How does a community change?
All right, Article 6, we are going to request that the town meeting dismisses this article. This was a placeholder in case the bids came over for the PFOS treatment plans. We received the bids last Thursday, and we're happy to present that those bids did not come over budget. So we are within budget for those treatment plans. Those without floor timing, correct, yes. Article 7 is to approve the MSBA Robinson School feasibility study for the sum of $1.6 million. This is a two-thirds majority as it requires borrowing. My understanding is the Select Board heard a presentation from the Robinson School Building Committee last week at the Finance Committee meeting, but I think Valerie Young, the chair of both the School Committee and the Robinson School Building Committee, is here. I'm also on that committee, so if there's any further questions, we're happy to answer those this evening.
So is Tom.
Tom and John is the alternate, yes. My apologies.
I just want to look into me.
I assume the school committee has voted to support this?
Just because of the meeting schedule, we'll be looking at it that Monday night. So, and hopefully fit into the printing deadline.
If income's approved, it comes approved. If the school's approved.
I'll move to recommend.
I'll second.
All right, Article 8 is moved down in your list, but I'm going to go through it now as we already have the award. So there are several projects, one for $341,000 and change for the undesignated fund balance to the Community Housing Reserve for the 10% community housing. $350,000 from the undesignated fund balance for the Forge VFW South Ball Field Lighting Improvement Project. I will add to that $350,000 for the WA Fields that was approved this evening by the CPC. $890,000 for the transfer from the undesignated fund balance to the Conservation Trust for future open space land purchases and other related costs. $50,000 for transfer from the Community Housing Fund Balance to the Affordable Housing Trust for the Westford Rental Assistance Program. $50,000 for transfer from Community Housing Fund Balance to Affordable Housing Trust Fund for a multifamily detailed needs assessment targeted specific affordable and senior needs housing, excuse me, senior housing needs, and $15,600 from the undesignated fund balance for the Metta Brook Farm Food and Security and Sustainability Project. So again, what is not listed on this is moving from the capital plan to CPC is the WA Lighting Project.
I'll move to recommend.
Your second? All in favor?
All right, next is a traditional article to authorize the revolving funds.
I'll move to recommend.
All in favor?
Article 10 is the fiscal '26 operating budget. Just wanted to thank.
Is that typo in this document or are you going to fizzle?
Looks like it's correct on.
That is not correct in the agenda, we apologize. It is correct in the document, on the further motion.
I'll move to recommend.
Second, all in favor?
Just bear with me as I go through the budget line items. All right, Article 11 is our traditional appropriate Chapter 90 local transportation funds for road maintenance and other eligible expenses.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Do we know how much we're getting? Did you tell us and I forgot?
We don't know because they have, they have moved the fair share apportionment into our Chapter 90 allocation, so we don't have an amount at this point in time. John?
Just a little, I think it's under typo there in the motion.
Which motion?
Chapter 90 local transportation funds. Purposes set for, that's fourth.
Set fourth, okay. We'll make that change. Dan, do you hear, get that? For purposes set.
Yes.
Great, thank you. We have such a clear screen now, everybody can see. Article 12 is a traditional appropriating funds for the Water Enterprise, other post-employment benefits stabilization fund, and the amount of $25,822 for retiree benefits.
Move to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Article 13 is to accept MGL Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22I for a veteran's tax exemption for the cost of living adjustment to be in compliance with the HEROES Act of 2024.
Move to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Article 14 is to establish a 300th anniversary celebration fund for the town of Westford.
Since we're sponsoring the article, I'll move to recommend.
Authorized, excuse me, Article 15 is to authorize the Select Board to accept Eastman's, traditional.
I guess.
Move to recommend.
What should you?
Motion to recommend.
Your second?
Second.
Article 16 is. Article 16 is to authorize a select board to-
No, 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 this is, this is, he's, he's, okay, yeah, I'm aware, so, of course you can read it.
Okay, sure. Article 16, the 16 is to authorize a select board to acquire easements for the Stony Brook Bridge project, which has been under design and review by the town for many years.
Dave, I think it's-
David got brought from the Historic Commission. A couple things, and most of it's just advisement for me. We were told of this project probably five years ago, and I spoke with Paul Starrett several town meetings and phone conversations, and he alerted me that he would be, we would be in the loop of the design of this when this was going through the process of interacting with the people on Stony Brook Road and the necessity for it. So I had in the last week have gotten multiple emails from the town residents of Stony Brook. So, one is process, and why wasn't the Westford Historic Commission brought in during this process of the design? And two, since that's kind of behind us a little bit, what can we do to mediate the different parties here to perhaps go through some of the design options? I'm not talking about the overall option. I spoke with Paul for probably a half an hour today about the platform idea like we have in Stony Brook for the Depot Street double arch bridge. So in my understanding, the arches are not going to be disrupted at all, but there are some apparent design choices of what is seen from the road. And I think we as a community could benefit from keeping the people who live on that street happy. So can we instruct the design to go through one more review of the finished product?
Sure.
We discussed this past week.
We have, yes. So I've also been in contact with Paul Starrett on this matter, and we've been receiving calls and questions from residents as well. My understanding is this is a Mass DOT project and not a Town of Westford project. My understanding is also that there have been public forums and public sessions where residents have been able to attend. And I did get an email from the state today that they did reach out to the Historic Commission back in September.
And I responded.
Okay. So I'm just saying that we, they did reach out, so that's just the information that I would like to present to them.
Yeah, and that's fair. I think this is maybe part of another discussion of maybe bringing the Westford Historic Commission into some of the dialogue with some of the projects. But what I'd like to see is one more effort by the DOT. And I think one of the ways this works is a letter from the MHC may start that process over again, not from the very beginning, but, you know, I work with the Mass Historic Commission quite a lot, and I think one letter is going to ask them, have we satisfied our scenic bylaw? So it is a scenic road there, and I think, given its value to Westford Historic Resources, I think it's worthy of a little more consideration in whether it's a focus group or the DOT did not really reach out with any grand effort to us. They didn't offer to be put on an agenda item, they didn't bring plans to our committee and say, you know, would you recommend this? They sort of passed over it. I think Paul stepped up and filled in some of that gap, but it does seem to be a little lacking there. And I would think the town would like that.
Review the project, maybe I'm wrong in coming-
I haven't seen a letter of recommendation that would, well, they would have said, from my experience, what is the local Historic Commission's response to this project? That's what they would normally do. So we can't respond if we haven't been alerted to the details. So I'm not, I'm really here for more of your advisement, I don't really have an opinion on what should happen, except a little bit of transparency.
Just for my clarification, so this, this article is, is to acquire the easements for the project?
That is correct.
Which in any outcome we would need to do.
That is correct.
Okay. So, so the request is that we support, or, I guess, what, what?
Yeah, I, and again, I'm not sure if I even have the wording down myself, but I think the town select board has the ability to say to the DOT, we would like you, the DOT, to initiate a meeting with the Westford Historic Commission on the final design going forward with the chance for neighbors to have an input. It could be materials, it could be the height of the railing, it could be whatever exposure the bridge is going to have on the sides. And I think in the end result, people are going to be a little bit happier with that, even if it's just the input during those meetings. I don't know what kind of changes can be made at this time.
That was going to be my question, where, where are we in the process with this project?
The design has been finalized, and my understanding is that the DOT reached out to David's group back in September requesting input and feedback.
Is that correct?
It's not. It's a letter in, I just looked at my email, September 9th, and I responded, we would be interested. And they gave us an open door to a public forum in October 9th. I was at a West Point Archaeological Review, so I couldn't make that, but again, it's not me, it's the commission. So an email to my personal email is not reaching out with multiple letters that would normally be put to the commission to read and review at our meetings. So I do feel like they have let that go a little bit. In my experience, which is 20 years in the field, there are a range of initiated conversations, meetings, communication, and I don't think they've really met an average on that.
Okay, so it would be a request to have DOT basically reiterate their community involvement process and ask that they set up another exchange?
Yeah, so they invited David and the commission to the October 9th event, and I don't know if you forwarded that to your commission members or not.
Yeah, yeah, I did, but again, I'm just trying to work this through so that people have a voice. So I think there's a little bit of a frustration with the people on that street that, and you could come back and say that, you know, it's been the town vote for the design and it's gone through certain processes, but I still think the, the end result is we want to make those people happier and give them a voice. So I think by doing a meeting like Tom suggested, I think that could result positively.
Was there also outreach in 2021?
Yeah, so they sent me out, and that's the response that he's referring to in the September. We have heard that Westford Historic Commission is interested, so it took them three years to get back from 2021 to 24. And I think part of this is DOT versus our in-town engineering. And Paul and I had multiple conversations about, you know, being in the loop and that was understood, and then he had to take a step, it's not his job, it's not his project, which is what he told me today, so.
So, so you have other opinions, is, is he speaking of this article too? Okay, yeah, so, um, just tell us who you are.
When you support this easement, this article, that becomes the, and they've approved 37 times, different votes have all approved it, and it becomes a reason for it to go forward. It creates a snowball effect, which is why I sent the letter and said, take a pause. Before we permanently change two structures, the scenic road and the bridge, let's ask ourselves why we're doing it. The structural analysis did not indicate that there was a problem, and there hasn't been one answer to any problems with the road. They are looking to totally regrade the road, take out stone walls, take out trees, put guardrails in, this is a scenic road protected by our scenic bylaws, put road striping in. Not one accident on the road. They're talking about potential safety on the bridge, which is a second issue, the bridge. Let's look at, okay, how can we do it? Well, we, there were two meetings, so yes, it's been going on for years, but it really is disingenuous when you throw in, oh, well, we've approved this three times before, but, but let's understand what's, what's at stake right now. The cost of the project was 500,000 dollars. It has quadrupled. In most businesses, we take a step back and say, what's the cost benefit? Or quadrupled, you know, what we were going to do. So I think it's worth looking at again. And permanently affecting that historical structure, the bridge, it, you know, they're going to put high stone, the picture they sent you isn't the right picture today, the one that was on the email to Mike. They're going to put high fake stone walls because the real stone walls are too expensive. It's part of the charm, it's, it's the pink house from Plum Island of, of Westford. It, 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 it's, it, it, exactly, it's a cool bridge. People always say, oh, what a cool bridge, why would they change it? And just because people haven't said anything yet, when I tell them about it, they're like, why would they do that? They don't know. I, I know you're really making a big effort at trying to get people involved, and they're not involved until the very end, when the trees start coming down on Boston Road and they're like, what the heck? Right? So the road, the scenic road, I haven't heard a word as to why they have to regrade it, take out stone walls, take, not replace them, take out stone walls, put guardrails up, put road striping in. And then the bridge itself, the traffic, if anyone's not familiar with it, the traffic is limited because there's an eight-foot bridge, one house to the north of it. So there's no big truck, there's, once a week, there's a trash truck, and if the linchance ever move, there'll be a moving truck. But nothing can, can go there, there is no wait, it's not through traffic. So before you just say, well, these are just easements, so let's just approve them, and then gets, gets thrown back in their face that, well, they've approved it three times before, the library did that, it was like, okay, wait, there were 27 votes that approved it. I'm asking you to consider what it is, and let's think of a better way to protect something that once we change it, it's, it's gone.
Thank you.
I have a question, so did you receive the letter that was advertising a public input section?
Yep, and I went. I went to the one five years ago, in 2020.
So when you brought some of these concerns and questions up, did you not receive answers from the people from Boston?
I, I, I sent them a letter as a follow-up, so during the meeting, it was an input meeting, but.
So they were not able to answer your question about why we're doing the projects?
Safety.
Okay.
Just safety. And, and I, I mean, I can send you the letter that they sent back to me, oh, something could happen. Of course it could happen, I could trip down my stairs tomorrow. Like, I, I get that something could happen, but that, it was, I, and I said, well, I understand theoretical safety problems, what actual safety problem are we trying to resolve?
I mean, in fairness, when I put the lights in at year 40 at Dustville Road, there was a state hearing, they had a hearing, I went to it, the voters went to it, they voiced objections, thank you very much, nothing changed. So the state hearing does not really listen, that's not part of their stick, so.
That's exactly what happened. So like I said, it's a 150-year-old bridge, it's charming, I would just hate to see without real good thought us making a permanent change to that and changing the scenic road.
So I guess I can have a comment to that, so.
I think the two parties are not as far apart as it might seem from, based on my conversation with Paul. The design does protect the double arch bridge underneath, it's just some of the details, and those can be ironed out with several meetings with a commission, maybe some approvals by the selectmen, but I don't think it's extremely far apart.
I mean, if it's, say DOT, he's got a freight.
Limited, yeah, but the apron, the type of wall that they're using to expose to the driver, these little things like that, I think those can be mitigated better.
Okay, the next word is for everybody.
What happens, so let me play devil's advocate, what happens if we don't approve the easements at this town meeting?
I would have to ask Paul what would happen. I asked, he had a conflict and couldn't make the meeting this evening. Would likely hold up the project. It is a DOT project, it's not on town schedule, it's being funded by DOT, ultimately taxpayer dollars, but state dollars.
Is it part of the tip? Is it, yeah, when we get position?
I don't, I don't know that.
Yeah.
You could, you could hold your recommendation.
I'd like to hold, I'd like to hold on this article so that we can get some information from Paul and find out, you know, what the consequences are if we don't approve it at this town meeting, whether it's on a schedule to be done, you know, this summer or two years from now or whatever, so personally, I'd, I'd just like to hold on this.
Well, I'd also like to know what, what is our ability to make some of the suggested changes that residents are asking for?
Yeah, we can put this to your March 11th meeting, it will be in advance of the town meeting, even if you have to make your recommendation on the floor, if you need more information, we can do that, so we will, if that's what the board desires.
Will the conversation with Paul help inform us about sort of what follow-on with the rest of the DOT? I mean, if we're-
That's what I, that's what I just asked, I just, can we essentially change if we wanted to make some changes?
Yeah, I guess I'd be like, yeah, so I'm agreeing with it. I think it'd be nice to know if it said, yeah, typically you can get them to revisit the hearing and address, address complaints or concerns, so.
I don't know that answer, but we will-
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm, I'm interested in what's in the realm of possibility.
Does it sound to me like with conversations with Boston Road, once we got past the sort of design phase, the, you know, every step along the way, the window of opportunity to make substantial changes becomes smaller and smaller? It sounds like we're at 100% design, imagine that there are going to be less than substantial changes, but maybe what you're asking for isn't substantial in their opinion, so.
Yeah.
Can we, can you-
And transparency is everything, and I think that's the only thing that frustrates a process like this.
Well, do you have a list of what you're recommending or what you're-
To be fair, I'm actually not on top of this project as much as it happened to me in the last week. I would say the exposures of the wall to the driving, the guardrail, the height, there was some interruption of the stone bridge top design or bottom, which I didn't quite get. Again, I'm not up to speed with it, so we could be part of the meeting with that.
What I suggest would be is if you, as commission, could provide some feedback to Paul that he could maybe bring to Mass DOT.
Bring to Mass DOT.
Yeah, so we have some idea of what you'd be willing to address and what they can't, that might help in the conversation a lot.
That's true.
Do you have a meeting scheduled?
We just had one.
Of course.
We could always do a, you know, emergency meeting, for sure.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to hold our opinions for at least, and hopefully get enough time for you and Paul, you can get something resolved, which kind of can do.
Yeah, if I could just interrupt you for a second, and out of order here, and it's not, it's a lighter note. I've gotten a lot of requests about the 250th anniversary and us not doing some big project, and Linda Green at the museum also showed me some disappointed attendees at the museum, Freedom's Way and a couple of other organizations that, Westford Tourism Committee, familiar with them?
I have not heard of them.
So, yeah, it's a, a group of four. Anyway, they came to our meeting and expressed dismay at not having that, and I saw the 300th on Article 13, was it? Or 14? So I just came up with this idea at the meeting, and this isn't the time, but I thought, I just had to throw it out there like a planting a seed, is, could we discuss putting banners up like we do the flags at July 4th and have that as sort of a minimum? And we don't have the funding for that in our committee, because we were slashed probably starting in 2019 or 20, it's a really minimum, so.
So if this article passes, or even if this article does not pass, my intention is to ask the select board to appoint a 300th anniversary celebratory committee?
Yeah, this would be the 250th, though.
No.
That's what I'm asking about.
The 250th for the state.
That's what I'm, what I'm just bringing up now completely out of order and out of, out of organization as well, but I, I have your ear, so. I'm trying to throw an idea out there for the 250th.
Okay.
That we would put banners up on our, you know, poles like we do the flags, and it would at least address not only the tourist faction that came to us last meeting, but also the Freedom's Way, Freedom's Way organization and other people that are looking for us to step up.
So the 250th of, of Independence? That'll be next year.
Yep, but I, I do think there are some functions in Concord and Lexington that are starting this summer.
Right, because they, the 250th.
The 75th, right? So there are organizations that have approached us, we haven't really come up with anything, but I just wanted to put it in your ear, whether it's 250th, you know, Hollywood Reed or, you know, those are details, but.
I think 250th.
I think it could be a really nice thing to add in a public way, yeah.
I wish we'd have this, it'd be nice to do on, 250th, next, next year, we'll get time for that.
And maybe the, the banners would incorporate both somehow without actually putting a date, I don't know. But that's maybe wishful thinking, I don't know.
It's a bit of money you have to restrict it if we were, start the phrasing.
And I have no idea the budget needed for, you know, 80 banners or something.
Fundraising by a private organization to purchase banners as well, so that's not a town.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We can talk further about it. All right, so Article 16, we recommended to hold at this point in time. Article 17 is- Article 17 is to authorize the select board to accept easements for the West Street and North Main Street pedestrian safety improvement project.
And we don't have a pedestrian safety committee?
I I contacted the chair several times, never got a response. But he was going to hold the meeting. So maybe they'll have something for more town.
We did have the public hearing at the Catholic Church with the, with the pedestrian safety committee, which I think is, this is.
If we wanted to have that, I was, you know, in this, you know, project.
You've heard the public safety issues about that intersection anyway, so I'm, I'm, I will recommend that we, I will move that we recommend the article.
Just a second. Okay. I'll share it.
Article 18 is to authorize a select board to accept easements for the Actin Road Culvert Project and the Reed Brook Culvert Project.
Would you recommend?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Article 19, luckily, there's only one zoning bylaw amendment this year. Sure, everybody's relieved by that. This requires a two-thirds majority vote, as it is zoning and is not housing-related, to update the town's floodplain overlay district bylaw by incorporating the boundaries of the FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency's flood insurance rate maps. We will be posting copies of these documents on the website if they are not already there. The planning board will be closing their public hearing on March 3rd and voting their recommendation. I know you traditionally wait for the planning board's recommendation.
That would be a little bit important. Article 20.
So Article 20 is to adopt the Specialized Energy Code. I know there's members of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee here this evening. Staff has recommended an implementation date of July 1st of 2027. You received an email from the chair of the Clean Energy Committee with a different implementation date. There's been a lot of conversation related to this article over the past month or two. So we look forward to hearing from the board this evening, if you, if you desire, if you wanted to hear from the Clean Energy Committee.
The Clean Energy's recommendation was July of 2026. I just think that needs to be said as well.
If I had to speak to this, Tom, or, inviting you if you want.
Um, Jeff Perkins, I'm Pigeon Lane, Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. We did meet with Mike, our committee met with, our working group met with Mike Edwards and Jeff Morissette to discuss what the date should be. And, I mean, I'll let Mike speak for himself, but I believe the concern of Jeff and Mike was that we are asking for a comprehensive study to be done by National Grid because of the capacity issues in the MBTA zoning area. We don't know if that would be, might take as long as a year, could be longer, and then it would take time for the town to absorb it. We, and that therefore we should go with the date of 2027, I mean, of, excuse me, of July of 2027. We, on the Clean Energy Committee, respectfully disagree. We believe that this energy code has a lot of benefits. And it has, it's going to bring us increased energy efficiency and reduce energy loads. And we believe that there is, we can't imagine what would come out of that study that would result in us wanting to move out that more efficient energy code. So we would, we originally advocated for a date of January 1st, 2026. But because another issue that we heard from, from town staff was the different planning efforts that are going on right now within town hall, including this effort to get to the bottom of what's going on with National Grid. And we understand that that takes time and planning, so we agreed to move out the date to July of 2026. But we believe this code is the right thing to do in in Westford. We, you know, we know there's things we don't know and we would all like, when we make a decision on something, to have all the information and data in front of us. But unfortunately, that's very rarely the case. So we kind of have to stick with what we do know. And what we do know is that we are in a climate crisis right now and that we acknowledge that in 2020 here in town. And that the climate crisis, if anything, has gotten worse in the meantime. We know that these energy and building codes reduce, increase energy efficiency and reduce the cost and amount of energy required. So, and especially the the passive, mandatory passive requirement that is required for multifamily buildings. We believe that could help the situation in our multifamily district. So we think it's the right thing for Westford and that we should do it in a timely manner.
So do I have any questions? Any board taking a position where they're ready to finish?
My understanding is they're going to be taking a position next week on March 3rd. The Economic Development Committee as well, I believe, has a tentative meeting scheduled for March 3rd. The zoning board also has a meeting scheduled to consider this. Any other boards or committees that I'm missing?
Housing.
Affordable Housing Trust.
Andrew, you want to ask a question?
No.
I did, I'm sorry. So we went back and forth in July 1st, 2026 or 2027. So what is your committee now?
In July 1st, 2026.
26, okay. Still on 26, okay. Just wanted to thank.
And we do need to set the date this evening because you do need to sign the warrant. So it's ultimately a select board-sponsored article, so you do need to set the date. It's not, what is the planning board recommending? What is the zoning board recommending? They're all waiting for you to set the date before they make their recommendations.
So I guess maybe it's a question for for Mike or for Jeff. Just if you were going to compare the two options, what what's the advantage we get in information and how would, how would our decision-making change, do you think, if we had this set at July 1st, 2027 versus July 1st, 2026?
Well, I think accurately explain kind of the grid issue. I think the big piece that's missing, still is missing for us, and this is where the code comes into conflict. Some of the other town goals is the impact on cost of housing. We do know that as a, the cost to new construction, don't have at this point is any data whatsoever on the cost of this for multi-family. So the hope is that we'll see some of these additional studies come in. Primary reason for pushing it out that far was, again, kind of a combination of the impact on single-family housing and multifamily, also the issues around grid. Successful with getting the state, sort of, to actually look at this and give us an idea about that this, potentially to our building structure. Running overnight, we should have significant information in the next, you know, six to 12 months to at least inform a direction over how long it's going to take.
Good. Just in response, so on the national grid piece, I feel like the information that we get that they're going to take a long time to do what they want to do, I understand that could have an impact on how projects get approved and what additional cost gets taken on. I'm not sure that would affect at least my decision on whether we should implement the code at a particular time. I think that's sort of an externality that the decision we make on the code isn't going to affect national grid. The.
But it will, it will affect development in Westford if there's not capacity.
But I'm not sure that it'll be harder to get permitted with things under this code than it would be with things that are not under this code. Because if if national grid is deciding based on peak, the peak loading should be lower under the new stretch code than it would be under the non-stretch code, which might have, you know, a higher use for, in the, in the summer for AC. So I'm not sure I understand that part. The part about waiting for information about build-out cost, I guess I'm also trying to imagine, would I decide not to do this? Like, it's going to have some impact on building costs. Absolutely will. And it may, it'll have some range and we'll learn more and probably they'll converge as people get better at building to this code. I guess for me, I also don't know why that would affect, I don't feel like that would affect my timing. It would be less good if it was 15% premium versus a 10% premium, but I don't know. If I had that information, my decision would either be to go ahead and implement anyway or just wait and do nothing, which I don't think would be a choice I'd make. So I guess I respectfully understand the points you're making. I don't understand how waiting for the information would affect at least my decision. So I guess I'm, I'm thinking that an earlier date than this. I'm worried that a date this far out sort of lacks meaning in some sense. It's like, it doesn't feel like a commitment.
I just observed that, I think it was, did we see these, Channel 5? They had a story, this, this, I think it was yesterday. Number one, number one concern, Massachusetts households is the cost of housing. And this unquestionably increases the cost of housing. And, yeah, you may get it back after 10 years, but if you can't afford it, so I think the housing cost does factor into. I was personally thinking that, I'm not sure, to be sure what Faith was saying, I wanted to adopt something and do it in two years. I was thinking, I was thinking 18 months is sort of the outer range. I was going to go, honestly, I was going to go with January 27.
January 1st, 2027.
27, so.
No, January, yeah, January 1st, 2027.
It's 18 months, yeah. That's right, yes. I was, I was going with January 1st, 2027 was mine. I thought before tonight, but that's just.
Could I just add something on the cost? You know, we didn't come here tonight with a full presentation because I think most of you have seen the presentation at least two times, right? So we did present information on costs at all the presentations we've done, the information that we received from the Department of Energy on the single-family construction and the estimates, again, from from D O E R on multifamily housing, which, like you were saying, there is an estimated increase in the 1% to 2% range. I showed several different projects that were built with passive house here in Massachusetts, and the increases for each one of them averaging out to about 2%, just under 2%. We did talk about the fact that there were operating savings of cost and incentives available to bring down that cost. So we have covered the costs. I'm just, I guess, taking issue with the statement that no data on cost is available at all because on the multifamily, we did present the data we received from D O E R on multifamily projects, which have been built with the passive house building standard.
Those incentives, though, I think this was, this was a question for the, I mean, for those exist regardless of whether it comes.
Okay, you could today build to the passive house standard and get those incentives. The incentives come from Mass Safe, and we had a whole chart with the savings on them. They have savings for the studies, analysis, and I don't know if you want to talk about anything, Tom, on the actual cost data.
And actually, those figures.
You can tell us who you are and speak to the microphone.
Tom Tower, Texas Road, 9 Texas Road. Mass Safe has published some additions to the incentives, went into effect on Valentine's Day, actually, so just a few days ago, as well as some amendments to the stretch code, which is not under discussion, as well as small technical changes to the specialized code. So those, those incentives are available. Those are not dependent on the specialized code. That's the correct point. They are dependent rather on the standards to which the housing is built. So, and the passive, passive house is an available path for compliance under the stretch code, which is currently in effect.
So I guess, we, tonight, we're not.
Right, I want to get back to the date.
We're going to defer to.
I want to get back to the date.
No, no, I understand, but I'm just saying if we are, wait, we don't need to wait for cost data. We do have cost data available that we've covered in the other presentations.
Yeah, still no visit tonight, that's, but all time we're doing is picking a date, and we've got.
So I think, you know, I could see a question from town meeting, you know, if we, if we said July 1st, 2027, I could see somebody from town meeting saying, wait a minute, why are we talking about this two years in advance, you know?
Just do it next now, right.
Why don't you, you know, why don't you just wait and we'll see you in a year from now? So I think, and I think based on something you said early, or one of the presentations, Beth, is that we can always move the date out.
Yes.
If we're not ready to put it into effect on a certain date. So given the fact that we could move the date out if we wanted to, that two years out, somebody's going to say, why are we doing this now? I think, I'm prepared to say July 1st, 2026 and see where we are from there. And the other thing is, you know, the little things that we keep losing track of also is, is once we adopt this and it become, I mean, we become a climate leader, which then, then opens us up to grants and funding. And as somebody pointed out to me earlier today, you know, we were one of the first communities to get in on CPC. We got a ton of money the first, like, five years because we were one of the only communities. So if we're one of the early communities to get in under the, under the Specialized Energy Code, then there's going to be funding available that we're probably going to be able to take advantage of. So for those reasons, I would support you.
I just want to clarify that adopting this code is one of the steps to be.
Right, I know that I'm a leader.
Doesn't by itself.
It doesn't by itself, but it puts us, it puts us in the, it gets us there.
See, I have a major concern about the electrical vehicle policy.
I know you do.
Yeah, because that's going to be real.
But we're focusing on.
Well, the incentive is to become a climate leader, and that leads us to a policy that I have some issues with as far as electrical vehicle first policy. We're not ready for that yet, I don't think, so.
We're not talking about that. We're talking about the date.
I'm talking about the rationale, okay.
Right, because we'll, we can discuss that in two weeks, we discussed the.
Oh, yeah.
Right. So I will, to move this along, I will make a motion that we set the date as July 1st, 2026.
I'll second that. So just to be clear, we're running on only the date.
Only the date, right, only the date.
All in favor, say, I, I oppose. For the 3-2, or 4-1?
4-1, establishing just the date. So the date carries.
I still think January 1st is a better date. I'll stick to my guns. The point is only the, something.
All right, so we will forward that information to the applicable boards and committees, who will be voting on their recommendations over the next month.
And so this will come back on the 11th?
Yes, that's correct.
Just so everybody knows.
Tom, you look like you're still, that's good?
Yeah. Clarified, so we've decided on the date, which is July 1st, 2026, and that the town is sponsoring, the select board is spons, no, are we?
No, we haven't recommended the.
Well, the select board is, it's currently listed that the select board is sponsoring the articles. You have not voted your recommendation yet.
Is that what you're asking?
I'm asking if, are we going to vote, are you going to vote on that later this evening?
No.
No.
No, because we typically wait for the planning board.
We refer to the government for finance, we refer to the planning board for, it's going to fall.
Okay.
We'll get there, but then.
So it will be on the warrant.
Okay.
It will be on the warrant with an effective date of July 1st, 2026.
Okay.
The select board will be voting their recommendation likely on March 11.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
One more time.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Article 21, this is to update our general bylaw related to dogs, related to violations and penalties and nuisance dogs. Currently, we have fines that are extremely archaic and not abiding by mass general law, so it's to bring our general bylaw in line with the general law of a first offense of $50, second offense of $100, third. I thought it was on the screen. Please stop sharing and reshare. Showing up as a screen share on my, I apologize, and thank you for bringing that to my attention. Okay. Thanks, Chris. So bringing our, our fines into. So bringing our, our fines into accordance with the state law, first offense $50, second offense $100, third offense $300, and fourth and subsequent offenses to $500. And this would be enforced by the animal control officer through our non-criminal disposition procedures.
All right, for the license, this is, a dog has done something beyond a, like, biting your dog or mark.
So move to recommend.
Second.
Article 22 is for a resolution, just want to be clear with that, to accept Boston Road as a public way. Once the construction is approved, there would then be a motion to accept the easements associated with Boston Road.
You move to recommend.
Second, you have a question?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
So a quizzical place.
Article 23 is to accept Diane Lane as a public way. As you recall, this was on the warrant in October, the documentation and the work was not in order at that point in time, everything now is in order, so again, looking for your recommendation to accept Diane Lane as public way.
Do recommend.
Second.
Sorry, thank you. All in favor?
The last is Article 24, which is a citizen's petition to change the date and time of the annual election. The petitioner is here this evening. You've also received in your pocket information from the town clerk, the police chief, and the director of facilities. They did have concerns with this article of changing the date from a Tuesday to a Saturday, but looking forward to the board's conversation and ultimately your recommendation.
I would think, Rob, you want to speak to it?
Uh, sure.
Just pay for patience, the past two hours.
Uh, no, I got here late. Carbon issue. So as a citizen, not as part of the school committee, this, I submitted this petition. It's partially due to things I've seen through school committee work. We've heard from our curriculum coordinators that, so as, as you know, when we have town election on a Tuesday, all nine schools are closed, even after recently consolidating our precincts, our polling locations down to Jess, Stony Brook, and WA. So, you know, even in that discussions, a couple of years ago, there was consideration for, does this open the path to parts of the school being closed off to the public and schools still being open now that we're out of the elementary schools? So before this petition came to reality, I did ask Chief Chambers for an updated assessment of the risk and the safety of holding school during election. He felt that very strongly that schools should still be closed if there was any election taking place on site. And so with that sort of door closed, and the superintendent agreed, so, so, you know, that's fine. But with that door closed, then my thought was, what else could we do to free up this day in the school calendar? It's disruptive to working families, it's not the best use of six hours of professional development for our staff. It's like six weeks before the end of the school year, so that's not a great time to be rolling out a professional development initiative. And it's, it's really a day of closure and disruption that doesn't have meaning associated with it. You know, we do close for a lot of cultural holidays that have significance to us as a community, and this is really just an operational closure. So I wanted to have the conversation, understand there are some trade-offs. I think the positives outweigh the negatives, but that's for town meeting to decide. And I'm here to give you any insight into what my thinking was and.
Look forward to your discussion.
So we can.
Can I ask, so, so Val, has, has the school committee taken a position on this?
Again, so we met the beginning of February, and then because of the way break fell this, this week, this year, our next meeting is the third, and I, it's a fine line as chair and as lead petitioner, so I'm opening it up to the committee on, like I do every year to say, is there anything on the upcoming town meeting that they would like, that members would like to take position on? So I expect that it could come up, but I don't want to speak for the committee yet.
Thank you.
And I would just also say that as part of my research for this, I did find several other towns that have Saturday elections. The closest in demographics to us is Bill Rica with 32,000 registered voters, registered voters, and they actually have 12 precincts and six schools, and they hold a Saturday election.
So I just wanted that, thanks comparison.
We can recommend, not recommend, wait until the school committee decides or take no position whatsoever, which we do sometimes on citizens' petitions, so thoughts?
I just have a question. This is really about going back to having the election held at the same time that we have schools session. So my understanding is that at Stony Brook, there's, there's Stony Brook and WA, right?
Yeah.
So. There was not a concern.
It's at the gym, it, this voting takes place in the gym, and there is a fire door that both superintendent and chief, I don't want to speak for them, but, you know, there was consensus that, that risk is mitigated. WA is in the main gym, voting is in the main gym, so that's open. There's so many entrances and exits that Chief Chambers was worried about staffing and monitoring all the, all the doors. We also talked about if you were trying to vote during dismissal and the parking situation there.
That was the other question I had, was, was, did this, would this, does election happen during the time at which the seniors are on?
Capstone?
So they're not.
I, I think it would overlap with that, but even with that, I don't have a high school yet, but the car drop-off line I hear is tough for those 15 minutes, so if you were a voter and wanted to vote during that. We also had a, I thought a pretty good brief discussion as a thought experiment about what would it be like if voting was in the Ox Gym, because there is a separate entrance and that part of the building is more isolated from the general flow of. Yes, right, so we did, I didn't, I didn't loop the town clerk into that thought experiment because it didn't go further, but one concern Chief Chambers raised was whether that would be confusing for voters to vote in November or September here in the upstairs in the main gym, but then on the Ox Gym for a local election. So I don't know if that falls into the, like, requirements to notify every time that you're.
Did you make both of them, both elections out in the?
I'm not an expert on that, I'm just raising this because the, like I said, both superintendent and police chief agreed that at this point, no election should take place during school. So that led me to this, if we.
I'm just wondering, so I, I accept the clerk and the chief's concerns as being challenging. Do you know if they've, I guess I'd be interested in a couple of things if I, if we were going to take a position on it. One would be for communities that have moved to Saturday, have they seen the, have they seen better, first, yeah, what's the experience of actually staffing? Has it been the problem they thought it would be? And did they get better engagement? Because if they thought that they were getting more people, that was a better opportunity for more people to participate in democracy, and they found ways to work around it that didn't prove too burdensome, I would find that pretty compelling. So I don't know if chief or if Lori have talked to people in other towns and, and have heard like, yeah, it's terrible and it's a mess every year and we wish we hadn't done it, or it really wasn't that big a deal, like that would make a difference.
I did talk to the Bill Rica town clerk, and she indicated that she struggles to find election workers, like, I assume everywhere does, and that she, but, but that turnout is low for a local election anyway. So I don't think engagement dramatically increases on a Saturday, although I'm sure it does for some members of the community, but it didn't sound like, it sounded like a wash for Bill Rica. And, and from where I sit, that the positives outweigh those trade-offs.
I see, so your point is it's, it's sort of neutral-ish for the election itself, and so having more control of the curriculum for the day is, is the winner.
Yes.
I understand.
Yep.
Do you have thoughts?
I had a thought, I don't know, we don't have that information now, but I'd be interested if our town clerk could reach out to the people who have volunteered and worked in these elections in the past and just ask, you know, if we're to move it to Saturday, which is still volunteer, which is still participating, so we can get some understanding, you know, are we going to, is 50% of our poll workers or just 10%? Like, what would be the impact?
Sure. And I did have a conversation with her this morning and played devil's advocate of there may be more people not working on a Saturday at their day jobs, would they be apt to help the polls? We don't know that. I know there are specific religious opportunities that occur on Saturdays, I don't know the specifics of that. It is a spring Saturday with plans and events, but we, as we know, planning the previous town meetings, we're never going to please anyone with a date, so we are trying to think of all of the pros and cons and the, around moving a date from a Tuesday to a Saturday. But I can certainly ask the clerk if she wants to reach out to previous workers and see what their thoughts are as well.
So we're hearing is postponed to the 11th to get more information on what would the school committees and.
School committees.
And the other towns have got later, later on, station of.
We're not able to do everything, I think I would find, is engagement improved or, or deproved, at least for me, I'd find that most compelling.
Turnout, right?
Turnout, turnout engagement, voting attendance. If, if it's the same or worse, I would feel one way. If it's better, I would be, I think let's put resource to get better.
And we do, I believe she's going to allow for early voting over the counter as well as we have done before, so that does allow for people to come in before Election Day and have absentee voting as well. So let me get some more information after having her listen to this conversation.
Yeah, that could, that would be a convincing counter, if she said we found other ways to boost engagement and other towns have found the same thing. That's good.
I think the other, really important, Chief Chambers comment about staff work Saturday, right? So I don't know if you had any further conversations with the chief and what he would do if this was, Doug, that sounded like one of his biggest concerns.
Yeah, I haven't had a conversation of how he would do it, how, if it were to pass, we can get on that conversation.
Does he have, it sounds like he has the authority to order officers in.
We've had trouble with that, but we do have authority to do that.
Maybe like this don't.
It's been other personnel matters that I'll discuss with you offline.
Round, but I don't think it'll be round.
Lower morale, right, after work on that. We're not at the rest, because how they shift work.
They only get.
You only get one weekend, there's a weekend every six weeks.
Every six weeks.
So if you kill off one of those.
It's tough.
It's probably, yeah, so it is tough. Talk.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is.
Kids, you know, it's, you know.
Yeah, it's your only opportunity to see and play sports.
Or if it's, it's the only opportunity you get to go away for a weekend, you know, or.
I never.
Or like, but, you know.
Well, it's just more games.
All right, so we will hold that until March 11th as well, is what I'm hearing, for your recommendation, if you decide to make a recommendation. So that concludes the articles for the March 22nd annual town meeting.
So, Chris, and just for the public, I think we're holding on 16, 19, 20, and 24.
16, 19, 20, and 24 are on my list as well, yes. And at this time, I'm happy to talk about town meeting logistics. I know the moderator is here as well, I don't know if the board wants to hear about that again.
Are we doing anything different?
Yeah.
Well, we do have a logistics planning meeting tomorrow. I don't think we're anticipating 2,800 people to attend this town meeting unless others tell me differently. So we will likely be scaling down to using the WA gymnasium and potentially the PAC. We will be ready as a backup for the cafeteria. We do have Wi-Fi hooked up now in the gymnasium, that occurred over February vacation. I'm working with the moderator on lunch options for people to purchase lunch in the cafeteria through the cafeteria staff. We will have transportation options if we need a satellite parking, and the COA will be running a van as well, working with the police department and the DPW on traffic flow, signage, and all of that. There will be childcare, free childcare through the recreation department, and again, for the free transportation and what may be I forgetting. Coffee, the Roots program through the school is going to be providing the coffee this year, so we're excited to, I don't drink coffee, so I don't think of the coffee ever.
It's the interaction with the program that I think is really great. It's just a win-win for everybody that we're able to interact in that way and provide an opportunity for the participants in that program to.
Absolutely.
Do that.
But we'll have clickers, full AV, all of that will be.
Chris, are you going to send out?
Survey? Yes, it's on my to-do list for the end of this week, it will go out before the weekend. So we're going to gauge people's interest in not only food, purchasing of food, but their attendance at town meetings, so we can better plan for that.
Anything else? You can talk if you want. This is a motion to waive review of correspondence. Section, all in favor? Motion adjourned.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.